I'm a wife and I wear this and I say it used to be red and I walk. There's nothing shows. Oh. Getting open up our attachments on.
We're gonna get it on paper, huh?
They would add it all in.
Yep.
Table?
Another. Continue. And then we just three things. Here's another one, continue. Well, these is two things.
Uh-huh.
One, three, and five. One's request to continue.
I hear it wasn't very long.
Please request to table. Five is request to continue.
This is another bridge lawyer has air conditioning, honey.
Got another page of the.
Well, it says page one or two. Only one page. Is there two pages to the, it says one or two, but there's only. Oh, on the back, on the back.
On the back. What happened to our, to our notebooks? The software. Has somebody hacked it or something?
Oh, I'm sorry. Forgot you were sitting. Yeah, well, I gave you a lot of.
Yes, exactly.
Put the paper underneath it. Oh, maybe it wasn't big. And all hooked up there. Saw it from all over there. Do a little work there. Say hi to me. As bold ones. Even as bold, like folding ones with the, you know, the legs fold. Table. Or, you know.
Hey, man. Go on.
Thought we had the realtor behind it.
He was kinda helping.
Frank Joy bringing him back. I change her out.
I guess we're turned on. Karen, are you ready? If you would, please stand with me as we say the pledge and have an invocation.
Where do we begin? To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ants. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunities you can give us in this great country. And we thank you for the opportunities to come in and participate in local government. Please give us wisdom, Lord, help us make the decisions that are right for our community. Christ has been there.
Amen. Couple things real quick before we get going. Um, if you haven't already done so, please either turn off or silence your cell phones. We can minimize interruptions. And I don't think we'll have a problem with it, but just in case. Um, we will have a time start and stop at nine o'clock tonight. My stomach will be growling real loud by then. Mr. Carpenter? Actually, approve of minutes first, don't they? First item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Everybody had a chance to review them? You have a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion of second. Mike and Tom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And real quick, as we get going, Mac, I mean, just want to remind the folks that are here that we're working with this tonight instead of our having everything online like we're used to. So if the things get sideways and us looking for something, it might take a minute. So please be patient with us.
Good evening, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Planning Department. Um, we've got, um, one request to table and a request to continue. Would you like to take those at the beginning just in case we have someone here that might be here for those items? Uh, the first item is item number three, the Wagner abandonment. Uh, we have a request to table this item. Uh, it can be re-advertised when it's ready to come back.
Mistress, real, motion?
Motion to table.
Of second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, number five, under the quasi-traditional, uh, section of the agenda, the Watercolor Phase Five, staff is requesting that this item be continued to May ninth. Uh, Planning Commission meeting at five, or four P M. in this location. Um, to allow time for them to sufficiently respond to staff comments on this application.
Commissioners?
Motion to continue.
Motion of second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, and that brings us back to our first legislative item tonight, the Golf Garden Large-Scale Amendment. Uh, this application has been reviewed by Bob Baranti. Um, and I'll ask Bob to briefly introduce it.
Good evening. Um, the first item is L U M eighteen zero 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 one five, Golf Garden, O S A. The applicant is Core Engineering, um, Consolidating, Engineering and Consolidating, excuse me, on behalf of Derbyshire Group, LLC. The current future land use is Coastal Center. The request is to amend the comprehensive land use plan and map, zoning district map, on thirty-five point three five plus or minus acres from Coastal Center to general commercial. The parcel number is in your staff report, is located at twelve nine five eight U S Highway ninety-eight West, Miramar Beach, Florida, three two five five zero. And the, the compatibility, it meets the compatibility, the comprehensive plan. Um, and it would also provide, um, much-needed resources and infrastructure to the surrounding area. There are no outstanding comments. I haven't.
Can you just turn yourself off, Bob?
Let me speak louder. And then, so, um, we're here to discuss this. Uh, I want to point out that the road that's being proposed to connect ninety-eight, signalized from ninety-eight to Walton Way, is a project that District Five Commissioner is in favor of and also, uh, Board of Department of Transportation is in favor of. In no way is this a quid pro quo for this zoning. The road most likely will be pushed through regardless of the outcome of this, this application.
Is the applicant going to provide the road, or?
The applicant is here and he will address that for you.
This is something that the roadway.
His desire is, is most likely going to be done regardless of the result of this, of this future land use. And I'll turn it over to Ed Stanford.
Anybody have, real quick, does anybody have any questions for staff before he, before he made that kind of? All right, Bob, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ed Stanford. I'm with Core Engineering and Consulting. Um, we appreciate your review of this, uh, large-scale amendment for thirty-five point four five acres approximately. Property is located, um, on U S Highway ninety-eight, just to the east of Emerald Bay Golf Course, and it extends to the north to Walton Way. Um, we're asking for a general commercial use for the property. Uh, our intentions generally are, uh, a portion to be, um, commercial in nature, mixed-use commercial, um, possibly multifamily and single-family as we head towards the rear of the property, towards what is considered single-family right now. Um, obviously, you know, we're attempting to place the commercial as close to Highway ninety-eight and that commercial corridor as possible, and just a logical progression as we move back towards the rear. Think that Bob has mentioned the, uh, the road, um, and the signal. We have been working with the county, Public Works, and the D O T to, um, establish a signal at that location. Um, if you're not familiar with it, or if you're not familiar with the D O T plans, um, there are some significant, um, circulation issues in that area, even with the new D O T widening. And, um, we've been working with Chance Powell and Public Works to, um, assist in this process. We had on, um, May tenth, I believe, I do have a letter if y'all want it, but it's in the record somewhere, actually, May thirtieth, twenty eighteen, uh, where the, um, Walton County Board of County Commissioners wrote a letter to Philip Gainer, D O T, in support of this connection from Highway ninety-eight to Walton Way. Recently, that, that would be the main focus of, of our public, um, I guess, impact, if you will. And we understand that we still have to get a development order for anything that we propose. We understand that we will have to meet any further scrutiny for compatibility. We understand we have to meet any further scrutiny for, um, circulation, pedestrian safety, those types of things, as it relates to the development of this property. Uh, and we've been through a lot of development orders over the years, and we understand that, that we'll be coming back before you and before the Board of County Commissioners several more times, uh, before anything actually gets started on this property. But, um, on Tuesday, uh, we had a discussion with, um, some of the planning staff, and they said that they had some comments from some of the surrounding neighbors. Um, I've only received two calls, and, um, they were very cordial, and they were about very focused items, but it seems to me like there may be a little more interest in this than we were aware of. But as you know, our, our phone number and our contact information is, uh, sent out and it is posted, um, on the signs, and, uh, we're very willing and able to meet with the surrounding neighborhoods. Um, if there are issues tonight, we would consider continuation. We're here to do something that makes sense for the community, makes a difference, you know, for Public Works, for circulations, makes things better, not worse. We've met with the utility companies. They're excited about redundant capabilities serving Four Shore Neighborhood and beyond. Um, we're, the, uh, I've talked with Sammy Sanchez, the South Walton Fire District, about, uh, emergency access back there to Four Shore. This cuts off about a, uh, two and a half to three mile, you know, circuitous route back there, so they can just go straight back to the neighborhood. Um, so we have a lot of support, and of course, you know, Chance, Public Works, and, um, and the Commissioners were interested in seeing a signal placed here because of other, um, tangential effects, it would have positive effects, it would have to circulation south of, of Highway ninety-eight. So requesting this, we know that we eventually will, um, quote-unquote, "give up" about three acres of property for, to continue that road all the way through, um, from ninety-eight to Walton Way. And, um, the, the change here, the land use change, allows us just a little more flexibility. We're not going to be asking for the moon here, but this is really the only, um, the only land use we could actually use to accomplish our goals, which was, uh, more mixed-use commercial and, and some multifamily, so.
Is this, is this the same parcel that they, that was brought to the B C C as far as a possible recreation spot, or?
Yes, it is. And that's in a holding pattern right now, so.
Or would that be on this parcel? Or what part of this parcel would that be?
Currently, they are interested or looking at, um, the rear twenty-five acres, which, which is about six hundred and sixty feet north of Highway ninety-eight and all the way back to Four Shore.
And where would the road, would it be, well, no.
The road is generally going to be located.
Eastern side?
Yes, it aligns with Driftwood on the south, and then there's a current, um, golf cart path, path that is about, oh, I would say two hundred and fifty feet to the, uh, west of the east boundary. We would curl out and hit that, uh, existing golf, golf cart path to mitigate any further wetlands impacts, and then curl back over and, and hit the Walton Way right-of-way that is currently, um, stubbed out to the property line, if you look at the map.
What, uh, what businesses are eastern, western, you know, not yet?
Eastern, west of us? Um, there's McCaskill, uh, there's, uh, immediately, there's a D O T ditch immediately to the, uh, east of us. To the west of us is vacant, but as you move out, we've got, um, Miss McCaskill and Company, you know, jewelry store, we've got McDonald's, we've got an upcoming car wash, we've got a, uh, an office building. You know, you've got a lot of these, um, uh, single-purpose buildings in that area that, um, have their own driveway cuts.
I'd like to clarify a statement that you made in the beginning where you said, uh, the intentions were to possibly build single-family and multifamily, commercial on ninety-eight.
Mm-hmm.
If I remember what I read in my notes, that you were going to use seventeen acres for two hundred and eighty-four apartments and ten acres for townhomes, that is not intentions and possibly, that was what.
Well, we go through a process here, and part of that is market, part of that is, uh, need and demand from, from the marketplace, and part of it is, is getting through, you know, the county, um, the county processes. And that, listen, we're very transparent in our approach to these things, and we're not here to, uh.
Well, this is not a development order either.
No, exactly. That's right. We still have to go through all those things, and we'll be vetted again and again and again. Um, in fact, if we were to be approved tonight, we would be vetted again, uh, twice more with the B C C, once more with the state, and three more times for a development order.
When you say, and I just reclar, just where I understand what you're saying, you say it would improve circulation, traffic circulation.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, just, I mean, what does that mean?
Well, you would have to understand the D O T plans, first of all, and I apologize for not having those here tonight, but, um, uh, and if we need to, we can bring those back in front of you and we can go through it. But these are things that have been, uh, studied by Public Works, and the D O T plans right now, if you look at, um, Driftwood, which is a thirty-three-foot right-of-way, and one road over, which is Ellis, those are very, um, tight corridors for two-lane roads, which you currently have, and because of the amount of, of tourist-driven rentals down there, you have folks that are walking a half-mile to the beach or so with a, with a couple of kids in tow and a wheel, you know, a, uh, a wheelbarrow or wagon, and they're walking down the middle of the street. And so the, the Public Works, uh, plan is to improve that circulation down there and improve safety by making those one-way. And this would be one-way to out, and that's where we would have a, uh, a signal.
One-way?
To the north. Uh, it would actually be two ways, one block south of ninety-eight, okay, and then it would become one-way, and there would be a U. That's why, we may have to talk about this in a different venue because I'm not Public Works.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. I just, I want to make sure I understand what you're talking about.
Well, see, what happens here is that if you don't, but if, if we collectively don't decide to put a signal here, and by the way, the only way the signal will go in is if we connect this road. D O T will not allow us to, to place a signal here without connectivity to the north. So it's, it's one begats another. Um, if we don't put in the road, we won't put the signal in. If we don't put the signal in, everybody that is coming, uh, north on, uh, Driftwood, will actually have to go to the east, and it will have to, in order to go to the west, they will have to do a U-turn. And we're talking about crossing three lanes of, of, uh, of traffic there to, to do that. So there are some circulation impacts that, hey, there is no signal there, there was no signal planned by D O T, but we believe, I believe, that, that, uh, this will improve that access and that circulation by, um, doing some other things south. Of course, these are not our roads, you know, these are the county roads, and this is above my pay grade, so to speak, because it's really a county issue.
And I think an important part of what you're just talking about is the emergency response sign, the neighborhood's north of this one.
Absolutely. Fire flow with the extra water, water line, they have a secondary, uh, connector, uh, Gulf Power, a secondary power, um, sewer, all those type of things will be redundant, which is the way we like to design things.
Can you explain some of your master plan to us? It looks like it's kind of in almost three seconds in here.
Right. Well, we have a wetlands in the middle, okay, so, and, and again, we're trying to not cross the wetlands and, or make any other impacts than are, than are what are already there. So that ten acres to the north, uh, will be either, it's most likely going to be single-family, but we show some, uh, townhomes there right now. Um, that is our, our plan, is either townhomes or single-family. Single-family probably be about forty lots on ten acres. As we move across the wetlands, we would, uh, we have about sixteen to seventeen acres that we've identified as, uh, multifamily apartments, between two hundred and sixty-four and two hundred and eighty-four. Those numbers are still kind of swirling around. And then as we move south, we, we show about five acres of commercial there, but that number's probably going to be somewhere between five and ten acres between, depending on how we want them, you know, want to meet the market demands for the different uses we just discussed.
But that, I'm guessing that if that piece north of that wetland.
Mm-hmm.
Across what county?
Actually, the county is looking at the ten acres north of the wetland, plus around, um, eight more acres to the south of the wetland, because the wetland's about two and a half acres.
That would have a significant impact.
Sure, sure. Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And your properties, uh, to the nor, on the north end there, where you look, showing the townhouses, single-family homes, um, the properties around that, is that mostly single-family in there, is that what they are?
Adjacent, directly adjacent to the property is single-family. There's about a dozen lots total that, that border this, this property.
To the east?
Uh, to the east and to the north.
What is, and then what is to the west of?
The golf course, Emerald Bay Golf Course. And to the east of us, it's in the northeast corner of the property is where the residential is, and the northwest, and then to the east of us is, um, about sixty acres of vacant land that is significantly wet, and then to the west of us is the, um, is the Emerald Bay Golf Course.
Is that in the center area there? You're telling me about, what about the properties?
Yes.
The center area, that's the sixty acres in it, that's wet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because it doesn't look like there's any development on that at this point.
There is not.
And then you've got commercial on either side of you, on the.
That's correct. But again, we're, we're here to be good neighbors, good, good developers. Um, if there are concerns from the community that we can address directly, we're open to meeting with them. Um, and we would have, had we known, uh, you know, or maybe that I'm going to be surprised tonight, there's no issues, but, uh, we certainly are available at any time to meet. After hours, whatever. Um, we'll, we've always done that. Um, community meetings are not new to us, and, um, but I want to make sure that we're focused on onsite impacts and not necessarily something intrinsic to this development that may be a county issue. Of course, we can show up to those meetings too.
As far as the change that you're asking for from general commercial, how much more density does that give?
Well, unfortunately, it gives us a lot more than we need, to be frank with you. We went from, we wanted to go to twelve units per acre with Coastal Center mixed-use, but because of the new comprehensive plan and, and the land development code, we were sort of forced to go to, um, general commercial. And that's why this, this property has taken so long to get to us here collectively, is we actually applied for this back, uh, in November of last year. Uh, we had a T R C meeting, then the comprehensive plan was approved, then we changed our, uh, application at the, after the comprehensive plan was approved, so we missed a thirty-day window there. And, um, after that, the South Walton Community Council, uh, challenged the, uh, new comprehensive plan. We went, we missed another deadline because we didn't have a good plan with the county staff, uh, to adopt the right land use, and we just barely got this, um, general commercial, uh, I guess, confirmed by staff, uh, right before the deadline. So it's not something that we want to do, go into general commercial. We actually would rather go to something like village mixed-use, but county staff, and that's only twelve units per acre, but county staff, um, stated that, that, uh, because of the, you know, the way the, the comprehensive plan and land development code was worded, that general commercial, and the way that this property is situated, which is long, north to south, if you look at this property and what we're intending to do, it is very similar to the northwest corner of three ninety-three and ninety-eight, where it's got the same type of uses. It's not as big, it's half as big, it's about seventeen acres, but it's, uh, multifamily with a commercial front. And that's basically what we're trying to do with a single-family or maybe a townhome component in that rear ten, ten acres to more complement the single-family to the north.
And how will, another, probably a traffic study in here somewhere, right?
There is one, and, you know, based on this plan, we have four hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-something thousand dollars' worth of, of, uh, traffic impact fees. That, and I, you know, to be transparent again, uh, we're working with the county. If we put in four hundred thousand dollars' worth of road, then, you know, those will be, um.
That will count for your impact.
Exactly, yeah. And so these are all negotiated items that are going to take a long time to get through, but at the end of the day, what we're seeking is a mixed-use development, or at least the ability to develop something with a mixed-use component, which is commercial, multifamily, and single-family or townhomes, and have a connector road from Highway ninety-eight to Wal, to Walton Way. to Walton, to Walton Way.
Do you have any questions to develop? You're off the hook for now.
Let me know if you need.
Go too far.
Okay, thank you.
Removal for public comments, we've had a few people sign up, and I'll just go in the order that I have them here. Michelle Knowles?
I'm going to refer to one of my agents.
Okay. Did they sign up also? Philip Turner?
Good evening, and thank you for giving me a chance to speak here. The primary concern that I have about the development involves the highway, the roadway going through from ninety-eight to Walton Way as it, as it's planning right now. Anyone who's driven down Forest Shore knows, we have a number of people that walk it on a regular basis. We have a number of mothers with children who take their kids on bicycles or on baby carriages and such, almost recreational except for one issue. The roadway is narrow enough that when an automobile is coming, and of course, I walk my dog facing traffic, I have to step off onto the property next to the roadway to make way for the automobile. In cases where we have a lawn service parked alongside a house, they're not on the property, they're on the roadway, of course, and in some cases have the orange markers out, but in situations like that, I have to walk around the individual, either out into the highway again, or on the neighbor's property again. We don't have any way of really protecting walkers on Forest Shore. Now, something else, historically, we have a number of exciting things that happen there. I had a stop sign dragged up into my driveway one time when a young lady didn't make a turn at all at that intersection. I have a neighbor who has four-by-four posts sunk into the ground to protect the corner of his property there, and they are constantly being knocked out. They're broken right now. We had a person come through a couple of years ago that ended up leaving an automobile on a, a set of neighbor's railroad ties with rerod in it, stuck on top of the rerod. So, some of the people that drive Forest Shore are not being as careful as we need them to be. We don't even have a speed bump with slow people for that intersection. I would certainly hope that as this plan goes forward, some of them would seriously consider the possibility of adding at least sidewalks on one side of Forest Shore. That's the only real concern that I have. I know that this property is probably going to be developed, I have no control over that. I'm kind of sorry if the roadway goes through, because there will be a lot more traffic through that part of Forest Shore as people are trying to escape the collisions at Highway ninety-eight and Holiday. Anytime we have a collision up there, we have plenty of traffic coming down looking for another way out. Generally, people have learned that there is no direction out from that point, but with the new road coming through, that's certainly going to increase it. The other thing is, I can't believe that all the people that are going to be living in the redevelopment are going to be any more careful about their driving on Forest Shore as some of the current residents are. So, I certainly hope that might be considered. I know that other people concerned about sidewalks also, and I'd let them to have an opportunity to speak also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Joanne Brooke?
Three Walton Way. I am right there where it dead ends. And there, the community is very small, like the gentleman just said, and there's families out, and there's dogs running across the street, and there's, roads are very narrow. And with the proposed amount of units or homes that are going to be in there, and they're going to come through Walton Way, that's going to be an additional minimal two-hundred cars a day that are going to come through there, and that's just not going to be feasible for our area.
You think, so you're thinking everybody that comes down that road is going to go that way instead of coming south to ninety-eight?
Yeah.
Why would they go Walton Way instead of just going straight out to ninety-eight? What, what does Walton Way connect to that they would want to go that way? And I'm just curious.
For sure, and lush traffic.
I mean, wouldn't most of them be going to ninety-eight to go wherever they're going anyway, eventually? Don't, I'm curious, because I don't know, where do they go? Where are they going when they get on Forest Shore?
I am going to defer to my neighbor who has really put a lot of thought into this, and I've just been so busy, I haven't had a chance to really get into it, but when they said to me, you know, "Right here is where it is," and we're so used to letting the dogs out, the dogs run, the people come, you know, that it, it's just extremely scary to think that that amount of traffic, even half that amount of traffic, could be coming our way. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Tom Hook? You both certainly can.
Thank you, commissioners, and thank you for hearing us. We're eleven Walton Way. We've been seventeen-year residents on Walton Way, and we don't want to see Walton Way driven through to ninety-eight. We think it will be an increased danger to our community rather than a boon. At this point, it, the five blocks that we have between us and the light on ninety-eight at Holiday is like having a gate on our community and keeping unwanted people from cruising through our area. We've had almost no street crime at all in our seventeen years there, and I think that our isolation has worked to our advantage in that respect. As Ms. Brooke was saying, the roads are narrow, the kids are out on the street, as Mr., as Phil was saying, we agree absolutely, and there's no sidewalks on Forest Shore. And when anything snarls the traffic on ninety-eight, which happens all the time in the summer, all the local people who are coming in from Sandeston on their way to, to Destin, to the Commons or wherever, are zooming down Forest Shore and cutting in at North Holiday to get ahead of fifteen cars in the backup on ninety-eight. And now they're going to come all the way down Forest Shore to Walton Way and, and run through this new proposed development. So, on that respect, I don't, we don't want to see Walton Way driven through to ninety-eight. We like it the way it is, quiet and remote, and, and it's been, as I say, a security boon for our neighborhood as a result. Another thing is our property and all our neighbors are on half-acre lots, and this is the standard of Dun Walton Way. Around on the eastern side of the Golf Garden is the old Florida Lakes Development, that's four units per acre. And across the drainage ditch on the west is the Golf Course at, at Emerald Bay, but there are also residential homes as, alongside many of the greenways there. Those are very nice homes, big homes on big lots. So, this development is sighted on three sides by large homes on large lots, and we don't think that an apartment ghetto is what is the best interest of our neighborhood.
Just a question about that. What do you call a ghetto?
Well...
And you made a comment earlier that concerned me, too. You don't like those people driving through your neighborhood.
We don't want people driving.
I didn't live there, can I drive through your neighborhood?
You can drive through our neighborhood anytime you want, but why don't, we don't want people zipping through our neighborhood just to get a few cars ahead because ninety-eight is slowed down.
Understand that.
Faster than the speed limit. This is happening every summer.
And what do you consider a ghetto?
Okay.
I'm so serious.
We just think, we just think it's a density matter, and in this case, okay, maybe ghetto is not the right word, but, but our area is already densely, densely built up, and adding homes, which I think is an inevitability on the Golf Garden property, is, is not a bad thing, but having two-hundred-and-fifty, two-hundred-and-eighty apartments, that's going to, that's going to really change the density of the entire area. And it's also going to change the density of road use, and we're also already on an extremely dangerous part of ninety-eight, if you, my wife will have a word about that. So, I don't think that ninety-eight needs a lot more density. There's a new hotel going across the street, just across from the Golf Garden, and so density is going up and up and up in this area, and adding, adding two or three hundred new families in that thirty-five acres isn't going to improve it.
Okay, thank you.
May I pass it to my wife Tracy?
I do have a question, a clarification, because I can't tell by the material we have. Walton Way on the west end, does it dead end?
Yes, it does. Also at Emerald Bay, a different part of Golf Course.
So, when they go through there, they would go east?
Yeah, the connection right now from us is five blocks basically to the east to come to Holiday and out on ninety-eight there. So, four blocks on Forest Shore and then a block up to North Holiday. At the Tom Thumb.
Is that the area you're concerned people would go through here?
At this point, what happens, do you know where the, the Yolo Board place is and the patio shop and the mattress shops? People come in on Forest Shore at the light there, coming from the east, and then they'll, they'll go down Forest Shore, turn at the four-way stop at, at North Holiday, to come back onto ninety-eight between Smith's Antiques and the Gol, and the Tom Thumb. And they'll do that, they'll be backed up twenty-five cars at a time in the summer slowdown, just to get a little bit further down the road on their way into Destin. So, this is a frequent occasion on, on days when there's a slowdown on ninety-eight.
Think this has a lot to do with constructions going on now? Because when they do?
No, this has been, this has been for years. And what our concern is, is this is going to just continue, only they're going to think Forest Shore is the great shortcut to get to town quicker, and we don't want it to become that.
You don't think the, the new lanes are going to help with this?
No, I think, I think we've already exceeded the density that those lanes were built to, to, to meet. My wife Tracy?
We live at eleven Walton Way, so our driveway actually is in the intersection of Forest Shore and Walton Way. And I'm one of those people who did write and didn't get to view. So, I actually have a copy of the email messages that I've sent that probably were what you were referring to, that you had heard, some of the comments that have been made. So, I do have a copy of that here. And again, I think that a lot of people are going to touch on this, the fact that our roads are very narrow. It's an old, well-established neighborhood, it's been there since the eighties. We bought our property in two thousand and two and have lived there. Our children were raised there. We, like Mr. Turner and others, this is our home, this is our neighborhood, we have our recreational activities there. So, we walk, there's no sidewalks. You have the alternative to walk into people's yards with their sprinklers running, or you can walk or bicycle, or walk the dog, or kids skateboard in the roads. A little bit different from what my husband just said. I'm not concerned only about the vehicles that are going to be added to our roadways, but also, all of these families now, living in these apartments and in these townhomes adjacent, they're going to be on our roadways with their recreational activities as well. So, we're not just talking about the addition of the vehicles, whether they are from the people living on the property, or from the, the traffic on the highway trying to get ahead of whatever traffic problems are happening, which do occur for multiple reasons. But we're also going to have a lot more bodies walking to the park at the bay, walking their dogs, running for their exercise. All of these things are going to impact our roads as well, and like it was brought to attention before, there are no sidewalks, and it's very, very narrow. And I did bring some pictures, too, of what it looks like when some of these service vehicles are parked in the roadway. There, I don't know if it shows it on your map, but when Walton Way comes through back there, there's a really big, sort of a blind curve around to, goes to the west. Well, I have a picture here that would show you on, it was Saturday or Sunday morning this past weekend, there was a service vehicle who was actually servicing a house on the east side of Walton Way, but was parked very near that curve in Walton Way Road on the west side, blocking that lane. So, then, not only is they're crossing the road with the lawnmowers and the whatever to get there, also the cars that are coming eastbound on Walton Way, when they get around that curve, here's a service person completely blocking their lane, they're having to appear into the ongoing traffic. Fortunately, there was none, but at that very moment that I took the picture, but you can see how dangerous this becomes the more traffic we add to the situation. The same thing happened a few days before that on a weekday morning, and I have pictures of this, too. We had something going on on one of the houses on the north side of Forest Shore with two big trucks blocking the lanes that were very close to the intersection. On Walton Way on the west side, there was also a house having some trees taken down. They had the westbound, the eastbound lane blocked.
Sounds like we need to get the sheriff's office out there.
How are people going to have service to their properties?
I'm just saying, I mean, you got that many troubles, you need to call somebody.
I'm just telling you that it's already not a, a perfect situation for a residential neighborhood. That's my point. However it gets resolved. And adding more vehicles and more people onto these roads, the Mr. Engineer said that part of the focus was trying to improve the safety of tourists who were walking in the roads on the south side of ninety-eight. Well, we have residents who are doing the same thing on these roads on the north side of ninety-eight, and we deserve as much consideration as the tourists do. So, that's, that's part of my concerns.
Does Walton Way, where does it go to the west? Where does, where does it terminate?
It terminates at the Golf Course of Emerald Bay, so it does not ever go through to ninety-eight.
Okay.
It's a dead end.
Well, I take it y'all opposed to opening the road?
Without substantial improvements to Walton Way and Forest Shore simultaneously, to improve...
Your major objection, opening the road?
Yes. The dangers of living in that area and using it as a residential neighborhood with the roads and the properties such as they are are too great to open that road.
Anything else?
The other, the other point that I do have to make is that I have a Northwest Florida Daily News article here that talks about the top most dangerous intersections in Northwest Florida. Four of them are very close to this property. One of them is ninety-eight and Holiday Road. Two of them are in the Silver Sands commercial area. One of them is Sandeston. So, like my husband stated, here we are, even with adding extra lanes in the highway, was already the most dangerous area of the highway in Walton County, in South Walton County prior to this. Now, we have a hotel. I know that there was a request for another hotel on the north side of ninety-eight that was going to be east of Gold's Gym. I don't know if that's approved or not approved. There's a new neighborhood behind our home, between our home and the Department of Transportation Ditch, or the Water Ditch, that's on the boundary of the west side of the Golf Garden, that has fifteen more properties there. So, we're already adding a lot more people into this area, and with the dangers on the highway and the dangers in the neighborhoods and for the tourists on the south, it's just incredible to imagine that we think we can just keep adding more bodies and more vehicles and continue to have that level of, well, we don't think it's safe already, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Can I give this to someone?
Yeah, I, I tell you what, I'll get them when I get them, but I'm going to give her a card to keep them asleep. I'm not going to.
Yes.
Hi there, I'm Kevin Myerly. I am the guy that, his post keep getting run over, that was described earlier.
With concrete things in there?
And, and it'll make a bigger hole. We can't put that back in the ground. Anyway, we, my wife and I just moved to this neighborhood from Valparaiso, just last March, and the reason we picked this neighborhood was, it was quiet. And I, I'm not going to rehash everything everybody else has said, but it's a personal, you know, story here. This is a very nice, quiet neighborhood, and all the problems they described, they're going to get really, really bad. And... And where our house is located, you know, our driveway goes on to Walton Way, but our address is actually Forest Shore. Um, so right now, we, one of the reasons we bought this house, it was nice and quiet, easy access. I, I, when this opens up, I don't know how we're gonna get out of our driveway. I mean, it's gonna be non-stop, probably a stop sign there, I mean, it's gonna be crazy. So for me, that's, that's gonna be difficult for my wife and I, and, and the son that's learning how to drive right now, so that would be fun too. But, you know, I don't wanna rehash all the things, but it's gonna be dangerous on that road. One of the things I'm a little bit, I don't know that I agree with, as far as the fire truck access, the fact that the, the Miramar Beach Fire Department is on Geronimo, I don't think they'd ever go out on ninety-eight and come through a busy townhouse area and two-hundred-and-fifty apartments versus coming right across the street to Forest Shore. So I, I don't think that's a good argument to, to defend that, you know, opening up Walton Way. And then, and then the other thing is, you know, we're talking about additional, you know, backup water and power and stuff like that. At, you know, that neighborhood's been there since the seventies, didn't necessarily need backup water and power, so I'm not really, I don't, I don't understand this. Maybe that's something you could explain, why that's needed.
Okay, uh, you're welcome.
That, that's all I have.
Alright.
Thanks.
Barbara Halsey?
Ladies, out four eighty-two Walton Way. Um, I feel like after we got here tonight, and nothing is on the screens that we can look at, everybody's kind of looking at this with a mask over their eyes where they can't really see the property and what's going on. Number one, my complaint is density there. And everybody's that's been up here has talked about it, but to, to throw that many cars out on a new Walton Way and Forest Shore, uh, after hearing y'all talk up here, I can tell that y'all don't drive that area very much. But people come off of Highway ninety-eight at Bayberry's Patio, they come flying down Forest Shore, they circle back around up to Smith's Antiques, well, they can't wait for the traffic light to change there to get back on ninety-eight. Now, they take a shortcut and cut across the parking lot of Smith's Antiques into Culver's Hamburger Place because they can go out without a line. So there's no way to control the insane traffic down there. But number one is, I wish that everything had been online where we could really see what we were talking about today. And, Mr. Sir, you said you had your name here. Probably where it is, I haven't seen it.
They're in the letter that we've been asking. Everybody within three hundred feet of your. But we, we notified according to county standards, but here's my card, and you're welcome to call me anytime.
First. Uh, but, uh, the people who come out of this new Walton Way, if they don't know where they're going, they're gonna turn left and go down to the dead end of Walton Way, which is a big circle. And they're gonna be turning around and coming back. The school bus can't even turn around on the street, it has to go down and back into somebody's yard. They did my yard for a long time, until we got big ruts in it, we told them not to do it anymore. But the density is just, it's just off the, off the charts, it's what's been, gonna be going on. And I feel like that everybody's looking at this with a microscope. What we need to do is open up and look at the third side view of the new hotel across the street from McDonald's, the new car wash, a possibly proposed hotel on the front of this property, and a service station, and then two blocks down the street, another hotel going in. Yeah, we're getting our roads widened, but all we're doing is just adding more, more and more cars onto it, so it's not gonna do us any good, it's just gonna be a six-lane interstate out there. And you did mention something here about a possible recreation area in the middle of that? I've not heard anything about that, where did that come from?
That's something, that's something the county was brought to the county to look at, I don't think they've made a decision on it.
Okay, but who would be putting that in?
That would be, I guess, would be the county, or TDC.
They, they would be wanting to put a recreation area in the center of all of this thirty-five acres?
They, they haven't said they want to do anything yet, they're looking at the, the possibility of doing it, so.
They're studying the acquisition of, of a portion of the property for county use.
A portion of that thirty-five acres?
Right.
Because originally they were looking at.
And it's up to them, I mean, the whole, the property's for sale, whoever would like to buy it.
Well, Forest Shore is, is basically a raceway right now, it will ruin the property values of everyone who lives there. We've already talked about everybody's safety. Uh, yeah, if we got a dog, we should keep it in the yard, yeah, if we have kids, they shouldn't be in the street. But just the amount of traffic is unbelievable. And there's also another little side road that everybody that comes down here loves to ride along and look at the water, so you can go another street over in that neighborhood and drive up and down and look at all the lovely houses on the water, and that brings more people in there, so. Uh, I'm for growth, I'm for smart growth, I would support smart growth, but to me, this is not real smart.
Thank you ma'am. Jim Thurman?
Thank you all. Uh, my wife and I live at three twenty-four Walton Way, uh, lived there for five years, and, uh, I've looked at the drawings and that that you have online, submitted with the county. And our biggest concern is the creation of a bypass by extending Walton Way out to Highway ninety-eight. Uh, I don't wanna reiterate a lot of the things that's been said, but if you would ride down Forest Shore, you'll find it's a very narrow street, and it is filled with children, retired people, and there is absolutely nowhere for these people to walk except on the street. And during busy times, uh, Forest Shore East, which is now connected from ninety-eight, uh, at the patio, enters right at Seascape, that comes down to, to Holiday, uh, that is a disaster when the least little bit of traffic backs up on ninety-eight, uh, whether it be morning or night. And what's gonna, and what you're going to create, is you're going to create an, an extension of that that goes right through some very heavy residential areas with lots of children and lots of people that walk the street. Now, I know it was developed in the ni- in the seventies, and you probably did a good job in the seventies of, uh, planning that, but that, that environment that, that exists here today cannot handle a thoroughfare there without some major improvements to Forest Shore for the safety of these children. I'd hate to come back and say, hey, listen, we lost three kids last year because crazy tourists are trying to cut through to ninety-eight, and we could've resolved that with some sidewalks and speed bumps and whatever. You know, I don't think we're gonna stop development, uh, it's a big, it's a big plot of land, things are gonna happen. But you have to pay attention to the residents that live there because it's a, it's, it's got a lot of kids, and those kids are on the street, they got nowhere to go, they, if they wanna walk to another, uh, child's home to play, they have to walk the street, there's nowhere else to walk. So during, in your planning of this, and hopefully, eh, the engineering company, they can come with some reasonable ideas on how to make that a safe thoroughfare, because it's, with the new apps, the Waze apps, our tourists, they're looking at the quickest way to get from point A to point B, and they're gonna cut down side streets. Not only cut down side streets, they're gonna cut through shopping centers, they're gonna cut through Smith's Antiques. It gets to be a zoo out there, and as you all probably know, Highway ninety-eight is a death trap already. And when you, when you detour those people off on narrow side streets, it creates a real issue for residents, and especially for children. You, you ride down Forest Shore right now, you'll see little, little figures out with a sign saying, watch for our kids. And I can't even imagine what it'd be like if it was opened up. So please take that in consideration when you're approving these things. Thank you.
Um, before we, go ahead, thank you very much, I just wanna make something, I guess, clear. We're not approving a road or development or anything tonight. That, that's something, that's, that's the first thing. All we're doing is looking at a land use change. Any development orders or anything like that will come many steps further down in, in the process. Um, so this is not if, if the land use change recommendation from tonight going forward is to recommend approval. It's not approval of a new road, it's not approval of any building or any development at all, it's simply a land use change. The approvals for development for roads, that stuff comes later on. They, they come back, there'll be a lot of time for review, a lot of time for the developer to meet with the community to try to, to figure things out. This, actually, this is not a development order approval, it's a land use change. And what we do at this level is simply make a recommendation to the BCC on what action they should take. They can listen to us or not, it doesn't, it's up to them, they're the ones who are the decisions makers. We're simply a review board who makes a recommendation, and this recommendation tonight will only be for land use change, if, if we do it. Does that make sense? Real quick. Well, under- u- understand something, that, that's, that's, that's not even what we're talking about, okay? That's, that has nothing to do with us, that has nothing to do with what this agenda is. That's a completely separate issue. And that's something that y'all need to be in contact with your county commissioners and public works to try to work those issues out, okay? Cause that, that, while it's, it's part of the big picture of what this development could be, it really has nothing to do with what we're talking about, okay? I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what I understand. Real quick. Yeah, please.
So Tom Hook, Alvin Walton Way, regarding zoning, we would like to request that you consider not allowing commercial for the whole thirty-five acres.
Yeah, that's, that's, they can already do commercial there.
I know they can do commercial, no, but we, we want to-
Listen to me, okay? All we're talking about is a land use change.
Right.
That's all we're doing. We're not approving a commercial development or anything else, though.
Okay.
This is a land use change. What's there already, they can do commercial, without any changes.
Alright.
Okay, so that, to come here and say, we don't want any commercial, this is not, we can't do that. They can already do commercial, they already can.
Thank you. We just wanna limit the density.
Understand, thank you.
Can I tag on something for just a minute? Tag on what Teddy said. Before any development goes in, before anything's done in there, it will go back through another process, much like this, when you get to express your views and things can be worked out before anything's built in there. And there, like the gentleman's already said, something's going to be built in there. And I absolutely agree with you in that neighborhood, and I agree with, things are so tight down there, I was there today at that intersection, today. I drove, I didn't drive down Forest Shore, but I was right there at that intersection. Um, I sat right there at that intersection today at the red light, and I looked at, I made a comment to the business owner there about that intersection there. So I know what the density is, I know what it's doing, I know how hard it is to move them, and I know what neighborhoods is, is faced with. I also know that something's gonna go in that area, so you can already put commercial stuff in there now, so. Before any development goes on, I think, even the applicant, he said he was very open to discussing it with the people that lives in the area. I think you've got a great opportunity to, for you to meet with the applicant, I think he's willing to do that, to meet with you and talk, if there's anything that can come to a, a happy medium in there that would make y'all feel comfortable in the neighborhood with whatever goes in there, from what he said, I don't know, but from what he said, I think there's an opportunity to do that, to try to iron out some of these things. Um, and again, he said that the property's for sale, if anybody wants to buy it, but so, but something's still going to go in there, it's, it's gonna happen. But before anything goes in there, it's gonna go back through a process, and before anything's approved, it'll go back through a process where you'll have input on that process, but this is not needed for that.
One more, we have one more person that decided to speak, Jan Marshall?
My name is Jan Marshall, and I live at forty-three Hidden Lake Circle, and on the proposed initial plat, it would be straight across from the, um, townhomes. It's down the corner. It's a sad day when the Golf Garden's going away, this is a little gem. Plus is, we won't have golf balls in our backyard, so, there are pluses and minuses. You, development's gonna happen, I understand that. The, uh, traffic is a concern, uh, because Forest Shore angles to connect with, um, the highway, with ninety-eight, and, uh, so many people, that's the way they go already. The back, whoever, however many units are in the back section, the north section of this development, they'll go out that way if they're going to structure, no matter what happens. I, I would hope, when it does come time for the approvals, that the stoplight, uh, connecting to this new development be an absolute necessity before construction begins. Um, it, it just has to be. I'm concerned about density. You know, we, we've got a neighborhood that would be on the other side of my fence. Same type of neighborhood, it's a wonderful neighborhood. And setbacks, that in looking at, at what was shown, it's on my fence, so, uh, concerned about that. Uh, you know, we have a little oasis in our backyard, it's gonna be gone. But, um, you know, whatever you can do to limit the density and the number of units, certainly appreciate it.
Thank you ma'am. Is there anybody who did not sign up or who has not spoken who would like to speak? Yes ma'am?
I'm at one-on-one Hidden Lake Circle, I'm a neighbor of Jan's, and this roadway will probably go out my back door. People talked about the density of the roadway and people speeding through. There's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit on Forest Shore Drive, it's not happening, it's just not happening. And if you open it to more cars, it's going to be worse. My next point is, I finally got a, a letter that was a certified letter, and nowhere is this proposer, I don't have any way of contacting him, but on this letter it says, it's going from coastal center to commercial, to general commercial. That's not residential, that's, general commercial is not residential. I don't wanna look at my back doors and see an apartment complex. I didn't have a house built with a pool in the backyard to have people looking out of their windows into my backyard. It's just not, it's just not the way life should be.
Is anybody else? Would you like to add anything?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
All good points, to be honest with you, and, uh, this isn't the first time we've, um, heard, and, uh, you know, these concerns in some older established neighborhoods that were not built with sidewalks. Even in something like Driftwood Estates, having issues right now, I mean, I was at a BCC meeting the other night, and it was the same thing, where you're forced to walk in the street, and then if, if a car comes, you have to jump into a ditch, basically, that's maybe full of water. So, um, there is a macro issue here with certain pedestrian, uh, and, and automobile circulation, and them both occupying the same space. That's not what the intention, I know, of Walton County is today, um, but things were different, you know, thirty-plus years ago. I do wanna speak to redundancy, everything that we engineer has at least a fa- safety factor of two. So, uh, generally speaking, when we do sewage pumps, or we do power, or we do water, we are required by most statutes and, and, uh, engineering principles to provide a, a level of redundancy. As far as the fire department goes, many times, um, it will depend on traffic as to which, where they come and go from, or the MTs, it'll be ten- which, where they come and go from, or the MTs, it'll be ten, depend on where they're at when they get called, et cetera. So, I think redundancy is actually a benefit, uh, to the neighbors, uh, to the north of us, but I understand their concerns about traffic. Um, I actually live in Destin, there's a road called Commons Drive that we live off of, and that is used substantially by bypass traffic. Um, I think this will be used less because of the circuitous route that you have to take, um, but I do understand, and I'm not trivializing, you know, the, the neighborhood's concerns, but again, um, you know, we're, we're put in a situation where, um, the, the county actually would like this road because of the reasons we mentioned earlier. And we have been the first developer that's been willing to, uh, work with the county to, to make this happen. Maybe that's a problem for us, but we don't, you know, at the end of the day, if, if we don't do the road, we don't get the light. If we don't get the light, and, and I can give you this letter, but you've already got this letter, this is the, the BCC's letter to the DOT on May thirtieth, if you want it, or you already, you've got it somewhere in, in the record, but I'm-
In the record?
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's, it's part of the-
Okay.
It provides, it provides a, a description of, of why the county is even interested in a road, okay?
Well, I think the important thing for people to remember at this point is, if this is a roadway the county wants, they're, they're, they're seeking this roadway-
Yes.
-that it would be important for the neighbors, people who live there, at this point, to be in contact with the county and say, "Listen, if this is something you're going to do, you need to make these other changes on our roads and help us out in this process." Um, you know, if, if they, if the county wants to do it, they can do it. It has nothing to do with this development at this point, okay? But I strongly urge you to contact the county and say, "Listen, we understand this may happen. If you're going to go forward with this road, would you please come out and take a look at our roads and how we can improve pedestrian traffic and safety for our kids and our, ourselves?" I mean, this is the point where you really need to be stressing that to your county representatives. There, because at this point, they can start, as this plan moves forward, planning all of this stuff together.
That's a very good point, because we are at that point with DOT and with the county to establish the alignment for the road and the separation between neighborhoods, et cetera. What we've attempted to do in this loose plan that we have presented is to move the apartments south of the Wetlands Crossing. If, if we wanted to today, we could put apartments to the north of the Wetlands Crossing and south of the Wetlands Crossing. What we're attempting to do is move it to the south of the Wetlands Crossing and then put single-family or townhomes. I, my opinion is, it's probably gonna be, uh, single-family because of the market, okay? And because we already, already have interested people in, in buying lots there. So, it, it transitions in a very logical manner from a lower density to a higher density to a commercial, um, development. As far as the apartments go, if you look at a similar, uh, model, there is a project called Seeglass in Destin, and it recently sold for two hundred, or for sixty-one million dollars, high-end, everything's very nice, great amenities, the rents are fifteen hundred dollars to two thousand dollars a month. The units themselves are valued over two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars apiece, and these are for apartments.
Not ghettos, right?
They're not. And so I, sometimes I, I don't think that it's meant to be construed that way, but I can tell you, in discussing this with apartment developers these days, the di- the, the, um, diversity within the apartment renter is changing dramatically. It used to be poor-broke college students like myself coming out getting their first job, and now we're seeing, uh, empty nesters who don't want a lot. We've, we're seeing a, a transition of ownership, a lot of people don't even want to own homes anymore. So, it's a little bit different than maybe we used to think apartments were, and, um, they're getting a lot better if I, you know, if I can just summarize that. Um, and we also understand that we won't be putting commercial in the back, that, that doesn't make any sense to the market, and it doesn't make any sense from a compatibility standpoint between the two uses. So, what you see out there in Miramar Beach, we will attempt to mimic the development, and the good news is, if you want to call it good news, is we've attempted to provide buffers on the, uh, east side with a road and a, and a, um, and a landscape, uh, buffer on the east side. Yes, we've got some units up in the northeast corner, but not that many comparatively speaking. And on the west side, we have a golf course, and we're still fifty feet off the golf course mound. So, we're attempting to, to develop this in a logical manner. We would like the, we would like the land use change to allow us a little bit more flexibility in our design, and I appreciate y'all listening to it tonight. And I am available anytime. Hopefully, you can call me during business hours, eight to five, not at midnight.
Does anybody know when the, the work will be finished on ninety-eight?
This is a very good point. Um, they've got about eighteen months left on, on ninety-eight. We're not even going to be, we're not gonna be close to, to completing any construction on our project. DOT will require us to at least have an easement, if not dedicate right away, before they will finish up the signal. So, that's coming, it comes easement first, then the signal work, then the road, okay?
So, will this significantly change anything? I mean, they got some valid points, very valid points-
About what?
-the folks with it, about the traffic and the safety and all, and, and the people circumventing around. Now, is that gonna change anything with the road being there?
Well, somebody mentioned, mentioned, uh, taking a bird's eye view. We're, you know, there's a bigger bird that we need to look at, because it's the entire Miramar Beach area that is being impacted by this new six-lane, I mean, you know-
Well, that, that's my question.
But that's not our, that's under, not under our purview. I will say, based on this letter I just gave you, it's the county's position that this enhances other issue, you know, other circulation issues in the neighborhood, so to speak. Now, you've heard the other side, where this is going to be detrimental to, uh, you know, some folks. This, to me, is a county issue, both sides of this is. We're attempting to fall in line with the county's wants and needs, and again, we're not actually asking for the approval of a road tonight, but I will say that we are getting to the point that, um, at the BCC, we will be having hearings about this roadway alignment. And if, if the citizenry that, uh, is in the Foreshore neighborhood, um, would like to have an impact and influence on this road and this signal, then they probably need to start talking with the, um, their, their district representation.
If the county wants the road to happen, they're probably gonna make it happen.
The county and the DOT.
And the DOT. This is the point where you need to make sure, and you need to stress how important it is that they address the other issue that this is going to create. Try to make that transition as smoothly as, if they assist on the road. But I think it's, it's important to understand that that's a separate issue that we're talking about.
That's correct.
This is, this is not an approval for a new road. This is simply a land use change. And a lot of people don't like land use changes because of, but, but, but most of the time, it allows a developer to do things in a better, smarter way, and move things where it accommodates some of the concerns that you have.
Currently, we can do up to two-hundred-and-eighty-four units-
Right, you can.
-but the land use change allows us to place those units in different locations.
So, you're not gaining any density, which they-
Well, we're gaining density, but we're not, we're gaining flexibility. You know, we're still gonna be doing two-hundred-and-eighty-four apartments or two-hundred-and-sixty-four apartments, we're not there yet, but it's what we do on that ten acres to the north, we can either put our apartments on the north and the south of the Wetlands and have, you know, uh, a, a road and, um, trails and things like that, or we can cluster them on the south side and, and do something smaller, uh, less dense on the north side. That's what, that's what we're attempting to do.
That's the flexibility.
We either push up the, the commercial and monetize more of the commercial and push the, the apartments to the back, or we push everything further to the south and have a less dense, you know, ten acres on the north side. The, the land use change, and I'm sorry, it's called general commercial, it's not exactly what we want, uh, we would rather have something like village mixed use, sounds a lot better, but in, you know, our negotiations and conversations with planning staff, this is what we have, and it achieves quote-unquote our, our goals. I gave you the progression of what we attempted to do, here we are today with what we have. Um, you have a site plan that's similar to what we're going to, I've probably tried to, to propose with changes here and there, you know? We still have to meet all the compatibility requirements no matter, no matter what we do as we go forward with the development order.
Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thanks.
Commissioners? Question?
I got a question for the county.
Mr. Chairman, a week in, staff reported to record.
Definitely.
Uh, Matt, what's the, what is the right-of-way width of, uh, Foreshore? Is it standard, or what's, I know they talk about how narrow it is in there.
I'm not exactly sure, but I am certain that there are no sidewalks, uh, and the pavement is relatively narrow. The comments, uh, that several of the speakers, uh, mentioned related to landscaping, uh, trucks and trailers parking right in the travel lane, that's absolutely true.
Yeah.
Um, uh, and that does MP traffic, that does make cars have to go around a parked vehicle, but that's absolutely illegal in Walton County to park in the middle of the roadway. Uh, in fact, I'd venture to say it's probably illegal probably everywhere in the state of Florida to park in the middle of the roadway.
I've never seen it enforced.
It is illegal, and if they even have to do it to unload equipment or whatever, if it's allowed, they'd have to put somebody out there, a flag person out there to flag traffic around it just while they're unloading, but it is illegal, and I assure you, if Sheriff officers were called and it was impeding traffic, they'd make a move, I would imagine.
No, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I thi- I think the, I don't think that's the issue. I think what they're saying is, the additional traffic will make that more hazardous. They don't mind the vendors parking in the street, because right now, I mean, I think, I think that the issue's a bigger issue than just that. And I think that's where you guys need to be in contact with the county, to try to get that as a separate issue plugged into this new roadway, and say, "If you're going to do this, you have to do this also, because the safety of our kids and our neighborhood is what's at stake." And I think it's a, it's, it's two separate issues, but one affects the other. And that's where you have to get those, those concerns heard before the BCC, and let the county start working to resolve those issues.
But does that roadway have to go all the way through?
That's not up to, that's not, we're not even, we don't know anything about the roadway, okay? We're not approving a roadway. I mean, I'd love to tell you yes or no, but I can't. I have nothing to do with what we're doing.
Based on what, um, the engineer said, Mr. Standford said, it sounds like there's, it will give them more flexibility to work with the neighbors in there by putting the density to the north and everything, so, and the fact that they'll have to come back through the developmental process to get any of this stuff approved, and more discussion about the road would come up then, but also, you know, whether they're gonna have single-family homes or townhomes in the back, that stuff will be approved at a separate, you know, another hearing.
Right.
This is just on the land use. So, based on that, I think it does give them some more flexibility to work in there, and I would recommend approving the land use change.
No motion?
There is a motion.
You have a second?
Okay.
I mean, I, I agree with Lee, I think that the flexibility that the land use change will give the developer will allow them to do things in a smarter way. But I also agree with everybody who spoke here tonight, that there are issues that need to be addressed, but those issues can't be addressed as part of what we're doing today. I mean, they have to be addressed on a bigger scale, uh, in a different way. Okay? Anybody else? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
If one opposed, motion carries. We're gonna take about fifteen minutes before we leave this next one. Okay, we'll call them in back to order. Mr. Carpenter, what you got?
Mr. Chairman, if we've reordered the agenda, would you like to continue in that reorder?
Yes.
Uh, then that brings us to item number four on the agenda, Seagrove Horizons LLC, small-scale amendment. Uh, this is a request to approve by ordinance, it's been reviewed by Bob Barante, uh, submitted by Interline Engineering on behalf of Seagrove Horizons LLC. They're requesting approval for amendment comp plan from residential preservation to general commercial, and change the zoning district from residential preservation to neighborhood commercial on approximately point-one-four acres, project located on the south side of thirty-eight, and identified by the parcel number in your package. Uh, you may be familiar with this parcel, it's the vacant parcel immediately west on the beach side of the intersection of County Road thirty-eight and County Road three-ninety-five. Um, the applicant is here and prepared to present his case.
We accept it.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm David Smith with Interline Engineering, and I'm representing the applicant. And as Matt presented, I'll hold this up, it's this vacant lot here, which is just west of the County Road three-ninety-five, County Road thirty-eight intersection. And the reason for the request is, uh, we want a pool facility that will serve the condominiums that are across the street. It's, it's actually owned by the same ownership, and this will be a private pool facility specifically for those owners, which, there's eight condominiums there. So, that's the reason for the request for the small-scale amendment, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Golf's not big enough for them to swim in?
It is, they do, but they want a pool as well, then, then they can move down to the golf.
No sharks included?
Yeah. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
We had nobody sign up, is there anybody who wishes to address this item? Then we'll close public comments. Commissioners, what's your question?
I only have one, like that. I have one concern, and that would be if they decided to change their mind after they changed the general commercial, that they didn't want to put in a pool, whether it's for moving there, and I wondered if there's a way to make a, a converted, but only for the use of a pool.
Basically, development agreement or some-
Right.
-how else would you do it?
That, we, that's a possibility, yes. Does the applicant have any-
That's our, we're, we have- Our goal is to have a pool facility, so we're open to, I guess, a conditional land use amendment?
Or an agreement, um, uh, limiting?
We have no intention of building any other commercial use.
I, I know, but we hear things like that frequently.
I know, I know. Yeah, so we're willing to do whatever we need to do to have, to have a pool.
Matt, what would you recommend is the best way to address that?
Well, on this particular project, the applicant has been interested in this use, uh, for quite some time now, uh, and had the planning department had the capability to allow a, an accessory structure on this residential preservation lot without a permitted primary use, they'd already be swimming in this pool. Um, so-
I'm sure we could structure it, we could condition it.
I understand the concern.
I think we could condition it to limit the use to this particular request, um-
As a condition of approval?
We need to do it with a separate agreement, after consulting with legal, uh, we could certainly do that, the applicant's willing to do that, um-
Possible that we can include it in the, um, ordinance, which is, either way, we can accomplish that goal, I'm very certain of that.
And we'll have a chance to review that as well.
Oh, absolutely.
No.
I want to review the language, because-
Yeah, no, Matt, when are they set for a BCC?
Uh, I don't think we've got it scheduled yet.
Okay, so we'll have time, definitely.
It's likely to be, uh-
They would, they would be-
That can be, if you want to make a motion, then it's a-
It would probably be a man.
I would like to make a motion that if we, uh, vote to change it to the general commercial, that it be unconditioned, that they don't, for the condominiums, you know?
Are there any other structures you're planning on besides the pool?
That's exactly what I was, I didn't want to interrupt you while you were making the motion, but can we say, and I may need some help here-
Pool and-
Pool and associated uses, or just like restaurant facilities, you know, and-
Like that?
They can't build much if, if there's a pool there. I just don't want to see them putting in commercial businesses right there on the Gulf Coast, you know, right?
Edition be is just for the pool and pool-related structures for that condominium, yeah? That's it, yeah. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any others, go. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, our final remaining item is back to item number two, the de-franchise abandonment. Uh, this is a request to approve by resolution, uh, petition for abandonment is- Uh, petition for abandonment is submitted by Walton County, uh, requesting the abandonment of a government patent easement on the separate parcel, uh, located at Beachfront Trail and Deer Lake Beach Drive, identified by the parcel number in your package. Uh, and I think our county attorney would like to further describe this particular request.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Uh, so Commissioners, this is kind of an unusual request, one that I imagine you guys haven't seen. Um, as Matt said, Walton County is actually the applicant for this abandonment, which is not something that we, um, really have done in the past before. Um, this, uh, so it's an unusual request and it's a very unusual piece of property as well. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have, but I would briefly wanna kinda take you through things and explain why Walton County is going through this process to, um, see if the Board of Planning Commissioners ultimately decide to abandon the property. Um, another unusual aspect about this abandonment request, you'll see in your staff report, uh, the Walton County Public Works Department usually, almost always takes the position that they do not.
I was looking for their comment.
They do not support abandements. In this particular case, though, they, um, take no position and the reason for that is the very unusual and unique circumstances of the piece of property. Specifically that all utilities have been removed from the property. Um, and also, if you look, I think you guys have a survey, um, of the property. I'll have to look in your packet. There we go. So you can see, this is actually an older survey from two thousand and fifteen and it shows, um, several utility lines. Oh, go back here. No, oh, I think there is, it goes. Um, it, it shows several utility lines on the property. It also shows a fence, um, coming from Lot One, um, in Seclusion Dunes and then it shows a turnaround that's a part of Deer Lake Beach Drive. So like I said, this is an old survey. Since the survey, um, uh, was taken, all of the utilities have been removed from the piece of property. The fence that was part of Lot One has also been removed from the piece of property. The turnaround remains, um, but it is, um, you know, subject to, uh, being removed at any time. And the reason for that is, uh, Dr. DeFranches filed a quiet title action in two thousand and sixteen and he names Walton County, all of the utility companies that had lines on his property, um, Lot One, the owners of Lot One of Seclusion Dunes and the Deer Lake Dunes Homeowners Association and also Walton County. Um, and that was a quiet title action to clear up any legal issues, um, or title issues with his property. All of the parties to that quiet title action, except for Walton County, have either settled or judgments have been entered against them. And as part of those settlements or judgments, all of the improvements or encroachments have to be removed from Dr. DeFranches's property. So the only issue that remains is whether or not Walton County, um, or the public has a, uh, easement interest in Dr. DeFranches's property. Um, I, I do wanna be very clear, Deer Lake Beach Drive, where there's the turnaround, but that, a default judgment was entered against the homeowners association for Deer Lake Dunes. Uh, they do have to remove that turnaround according to the default judgment. Um, but that was a private drive. It's never been a public drive. And the property, Dr. DeFranches's property, is completely surrounded by private property on all sides. And it, it looks, whenever you look at it in a large scale, it, it looks as though it may provide some sort of access to the beach, but that is actually not the case. Whenever you see the property kinda tapers, there is no possible way to get to the beach using this property. So this is not a circumstance where we're abandoning any property that we could use as a beach access or anything like that. That, that would obviously be something that, um, I don't think anybody, especially Public Works, would be in favor of. It's just that now, especially now that the, uh, utility companies, um, ha, have removed their lines and the homeowners to the south that have the turnaround have the judgment against them and have to remove their turnaround improvement. Um, at this point, a, and is completely surrounded by private property on all sides, at this point, it's not clear what public purpose it would serve to keep this property or to keep the easement interest that the public has in it.
And he's wanna build a house, sir?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Arrow House?
Will be, yes ma'am.
And he will be able to get access from Seclusion Drive?
Uh, so that, I mean, that would be something that he would probably have to work out with the, um, the homeowners, um, or the homeowners association in Seclusion Drive? Oh, I'm sorry, and Miss Chu represents Dr. DeFranches, I believe she. Uh, so, and I guess we can mark this as.
Is that what he's planning on building?
So is this the application for a single-family home? Okay, so we just, um, introduce this packet as exhibit one if you'd like, but this is a single-family, a depiction of a single-family home that Dr. DeFranches has already applied for. And this is subject of litigation between Dr. DeFranches and the county.
That's not really our problem.
No, not really, um.
But it looks nice.
To answer any questions you guys have, this is a very, like I said, unusual circumstance and an unusual piece of property.
Anybody have any questions for staff before we open up public comment? Okay. This is item number, I don't think we have anybody signing up, I can't. Hold on. This computer being down, it makes it difficult.
No problem. Um, thank you for, uh, my name is Daniel Rosenheim. I'm an attorney, um, here on behalf of my client, Seclusion Dunes Owners Association and James Forsner. Uh, Seclusion Dunes is a platted subdivision just north of, um, this patent easement. Uh, James Forsner's property, um, actually shares a common boundary with this patent easement. So this patent easement is contiguous, meaning it touches, um, both sides of Deer Lake Dunes to the south and Seclusion Dunes to the north. So it's surrounded by completely platted subdivisions, mostly developed. So I'm here to request the planning commission to, um, not issue a recommendation, um, as to this, um, as to this property because it can't be developed, in our opinion, consistent with the land development code. If the property cannot be developed in harmony with the land development code and in harmony with the surrounding developments, um, the abandonment shouldn't be recommended for approval, in our opinion. So the pro, there was a prior planning director, Mike Lane, who had, um, as you can see, I, I wrote a memo. There's a last page of the memo, there's a letter, uh, that was issued by the planning director, Mike Lane. And he issued an opinion in this letter that stated that the patent easement, um, he described it as a thirty-three-foot wide access and utility easement. Um, and while it's, the department is unaware of how this portion of land was sold, it is not a lot of record nor is it buildable. So while this opinion was issued in two thousand and four and I see that the county has kind of changed position on that, well, while we are unaware other than the litigation as to why that, why they're changing position. We believe that this letter from the prior planning director, Mike Lane, uh, continues to support the current land development code and the comprehensive plan. For, for, for instance, this patent easement is in residential preservation. Um, and, and the Walton County land development code, um, all property within residential preservation must be developed to, quote, "protect the integrity of the existing residential subdivisions." Um, and furthermore, based on the minimum lot requirements, uh, lot area requirements under the land development code, all developments shall have a total number of, uh, areas sufficient to meet all the development and design standards under the code. So we believe that this echoes, again echoes what the previous planning director, Mike Lane, had, uh, stated in the letter regarding the, the, uh, the patent easement not being a lot of record or buildable. So, um, furthermore, uh, the applicant is requesting to build a single-family home on this lot. Uh, single-family homes, as you know, require seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks. It appears based on the stand, based on the drawings that the seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks, um, show to be met, but, uh, we believe that, um, given the size of this lot being thirty-three feet, when you add in the seven-and-a-half-foot setbacks, now you're left with twenty-three feet, um, of developable land. So we're stuck with a skinny home, which we don't believe harmonizes with the surrounding developments. So a single-family home of this stature, this scale or in character, this scale, um, it doesn't, it, it, it won't, i- i- essentially, it would, uh, a development of this size, this character, being small, narrow, long, does not harmonize, um, with the, and, and would furthermore detract from the integrity and value of the existing contiguous developments. Seclusion Dunes to the north and Deer Lake, uh, Dunes to the south. Um, so it is my request that we ask the county to stick with their prior opinion from two thousand and four, um, as, um, as shown in that letter and, um, and not enrich the DeFranches's, um, at, you know, at the, at, you know, at, at the, you know, at the detriment of the, the surrounding developments and homeowners of Seclusion Dunes and, and Deer Lake Dunes. So, um, that's all I have. So my request to the county is to, um, not, uh, make a recommendation for approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Ask you a question.
Sure.
Other than you don't believe that they can get a development order to build in this one environment, is there any other public interest issues that would, that would prevent the county from releasing the, the easement? Is there a reason for the county to keep that easement other than what your opinion is as far as what they can or can't do on that property?
Sure, so as Sidney mentioned, the, the DeFranches's were successful in, um, uh, a judgment against Deer Lake Dunes to remove that roundabout. Um, but, you know, hindsight, um, you know, being twenty-twenty, you, uh, there is no turnaround there. So you have a, you have a public beach access due west. Um, when people park there, the only way for them to turn around is to continue traveling east towards Deer Lake Dunes and Seclusion Dunes. There's a private road and turn around at that turnaround. Um, right now, it's only a single access drive. Right, but people still use it to turn around at that beach access.
So there's, uh, approximately, you know, I wanna say maybe a quarter mile away, but I'm sure Dean or, um, his client may be wrong. But a quarter mile to the west, there is, uh, a county-owned property that was zeded to the county from the federal government that is, um, a public beach, but there are no improvements there, um, currently. It's, it's just an open vacant piece of property. It's called Walton Dunes.
But this is not a public beach access, is it?
No, sorry, no.
The one to the west.
Right. But I wanna say about a quarter of a mile, but probably a little bit less than that to the west, there is a public beach access with no improvements on it.
So currently, people park off either on the side of the road, but when they go to leave, as they're coming in from the, the northwest, they are parking facing east. So naturally, as they're leaving, they have to have some turnaround, so they're driving that towards Seclusion Dunes and Deer Lake. So when they get there, they either use the roundabout that's currently there, but most likely will be gone based on the judgment entered by the court. Uh, and they'll ha, either have to use, you know, uh, the, the, the entry of Seclusion Dunes as a turnaround.
But if the court's already ordered that, then that's a moot point, right?
Right. But without, but if the.
What I'm saying, my point is, if the court has already said, that has to go.
Mm-hmm.
It has to.
Right, but what the court hasn't said is that the county is required to abandon that easement and if the county continues.
Oh, the county keeps that, the court's not gonna do that.
Right, so it's.
But if there's, if the court has said the turnaround has to be removed, the turnaround has to be removed.
Sure, but the county can, can accept maintenance on the property and it could be used as a turnaround, you know?
Private property, yeah.
Uh, if you were to ask.
They still have, they only have an interest in the real property. They don't own the estate and the real property. They only own the interest in it. It's an easement, right now it'd be useful.
So you use the county to protect that, right?
They can maintain it. That's set up to Sidney to.
Oh, that's not to Sidney, that's to the county commissioners, what to do on this, uh, property, but, um, so I mean, in order for us to maintain just that roundabout, we would have to be given permission by the Deer Lake Dunes Homeowners Association to also maintain their road, um, and make it public. But those, it's a, it's a road that's made out of pavers currently.
Basically, you need a requirement from the county.
It wouldn't meet the county standards. I mean, we could, Public Works would have the final say on that, but I don't see how it possibly could meet the standards for us to maintain it. Typically, we don't undertake that obligation unless the road meets the county standards.
So basically, there's no reason for the county to have any.
That's, um, yes. I mean, now that all the utilities are gone and the turnaround, you know, has to be removed so it serves no purpose or it can't serve a purpose for the owners in Deer Lake Dunes any longer. Um, and the Public Works has looked at it and basically said, there's nothing we can use, use it for.
How big's your client's house?
How large is your client's house? Is your pump everywhere?
So is your client concerned that a smaller house will?
No, it's, it's the aesthetics, it's the look, it's the value. You drive down that road, that's the first thing you see is gonna be that house and then two drives to the north and into directly to.
Still, that's good. Building permit.
Have they tried to buy the property from, uh?
When he gets done?
I, I do believe that offers have been made, um, but it is, um, from my understanding, his intention to continue to build.
He don't have this money.
But as soon as the, this lot is.
But the county don't have to give a building permit either.
Sure, but as soon as the law is abandoned, it now becomes marketable. So now, if, if it's not gonna be Mr. DeFranches's problem to get a building permit, he sure can sell to another person and it could be their problem and continue to be the county's problem.
Yeah, but there has to be a public interest in the county to maintain the easement.
Sure, and right now, there's not adequate turnaround for, for firefighters. I don't, I've tried to pull the DO, there's no conditions on Deer Lake Dunes for, um, you know, for fire access. As we understand that this original turnaround was placed there because there wasn't an adequate, um, turnaround.
Doesn't already say that turnaround, John.
Because, only because there, there was no answer. They got a default entered against them, so it wasn't based on. Sure, sure. And if I represented them, it would have, may have been different, but I don't, so I'm trying to set the best case we can for seclusion.
I understand. I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand where we have to stand on public interest.
There is no other adequate turnaround. There's a private, or a public beach access right now, as Sidney said, it's improved, but, um, you know, what about the future, what happens when it does become improved?
But if y'all want to continue to have access for a turnaround in there, you'd have to have some rights to that property and you don't have any. I mean, even with the county's, you know, rights, that doesn't give y'all the rights to, so.
Anybody else have any questions for comment?
Can you, does you want your memory and done to be made, uh, an exhibit and introduced into the record?
Um, yeah, you can, that'd be fine.
And just for, to clarify the record, I'd also make, um, ask that the staff report be entered.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think that would, would allow to speak. Thank you.
My name is Beverly Otson and Daniel represents us, so, and actually, I don't wanna, um, contradict anything he has said, but I just wanna add to it. Because I've been dealing with this issue for seventeen years, ever since the county, um, sold it in a tax sale for one thousand dollars. Um, we, the. We, the first we heard of it in Seclusion Dunes, by the way, we, we built our house in Seclusion Dunes in nineteen ninety-four, with the intention of retiring here, which we did in two thousand and fifteen. So we're not, we're not investors, we're not fly-by-night sort of people that are just in here to make a lot of money like some people are in Walton County. We're here for the long haul, we're permanent residents, we have sunk a considerable amount of our retirement savings into our home, we live there, we see everything that goes on. So when this property was sold at the tax sale, after that, we were told by the county that that was a mistake, it might have been a clerical error. Nobody in the county actually knew how that happened or why it happened, but it goes back to the development of Seclusion Dunes, which happened in nineteen ninety-two. This, this little easement was part of, obviously, do you have a map? Are y'all looking at this? So it's, it's part of Government Lot Twenty-Six, which was owned by a corporation called GMW One. When they platted Seclusion Dunes, they left it out, and no explanation was ever given to us by the developers, but it seemed that it was so that they would keep that little bit of easement so they could access the property to the south between Seclusion Dunes and the beach, which eventually they did, and that's where Deer Lake Dunes is. It was left out of that development as well. In the meantime, the owner passed away suddenly. This little easement probably just fell through the cracks of his estate, they didn't pay the one-dollar property tax on it, which is what the county at that time was charging. I'm the Secretary of Treasury of Seclusion Dunes, I know, we paid one-dollar property tax on our little private street for many years. At around the time that this tax sale happened was when the county stopped collecting that one-dollar property tax on these little, little bitty easements. So another corporation acquired it for a thousand dollars, they sold it to Mr. DeFranches, who used later for five thousand dollars, but it was not the current owner's, the current owner, it was his father, bought it for five thousand dollars, and many offers were made to them for a reasonable profit by people in Seclusion Dunes. And then when Deer Lake Dunes was established in nineteen ninety-seven, there was no turnaround for that property, obviously, so the county required them to put that turnaround on this easement, because it's a public roadway easement, access and utility easement is what it is. Since that time, we've, we've accumulated a tremendous file of correspondence between Seclusion Dunes and the county, various county officials, every, every county attorney, and every planning department official, the, um, the Board of Adjustment, everybody in the county has always upheld this easement, and it is publicly used on a regular basis, daily, not just for the people that, that are in Deer Lake Dunes, but also, as Daniel pointed out, by people that come down the road because there's no other place to turn around, we see it all the time. So this is the, this is the public's interest in it, is that it is being used as a public roadway, even though Deer Lake Dunes, um, they paved it, but the public uses it constantly. I don't know where those people are going to turn around.
I understand that the judges ordered that to stop already.
And I also want you to know that the, the owners of Deer Lake Dunes were not informed that this suit, when this suit came about. The suit was against the Deer Lake Dunes Owners Association, which no longer exists, and individual owners, it's very easy to find out who they are, they were not notified of the suit. None of them actually live here, and they didn't even know the suit was going on, and didn't know anything about it until after the judgment, so...
Pretty common down there, right?
I don't, it's common for people not to live here?
Quiet title.
Oh, well...
People not knowing.
Oh, not knowing. Well, I, I can't speak to that. I just only know what I have been told by owners of Deer Lake Dunes, that there was not proper notification to the individuals who own the property there. So the judgment was by default, because they didn't defend themselves, so how can you defend it if you don't know there's a suit attached? So that's the background on that. If the county abandons this easement and accedes to the wishes of Mr. DeFranches, it, in my view, sets a dangerous precedent, that all you have to do to get what you want, and keep in mind that he, he personally has nothing invested in this, this land, other than whatever he's paid his lawyer all these years to bring these suits against the county and everybody else in sight. Last summer, when the utilities were moving off of the, their lines off, the gas company moved, the water company moved, it was because they had rather moved their lines than to go through court against Mr. DeFranches. So if this is the kind of thing that the county condones, that all you got to do is just bring enough lawsuits and you get what you want, and then you make your money, then, that goes against my sense of what the county's responsibility is to the citizens of the county, and those of us who live here, and those of us who've made legitimate investments in property over the years, that because of our natural resources and the whole economy of the county and everything around here, naturally, things have gone up. But I, I just don't think this is a precedent that the county should be engaging in, and it's against the public interest. I beg you to give this careful consideration. It has ramifications not only for this particular easement, but other, other properties as well, I'm sure. Thank you for your attention.
Anybody else?
While Ms. Minshew's coming up, I did want to address one thing that Ms. Oxon said. So I will say, um, the county has tried to include the neighbors in the subdivision in the quiet title action. In fact, the county filed a motion to dismiss for failure to join indispensable parties, arguing that all of the lot owners in Seclusion Dunes and Deer Lake Dunes should be parties to this litigation. Court didn't find it in our favor, but we tried to make that effort to include everyone so their wishes could be made known. Also, Dr. DeFranches has filed a, a separate lawsuit against the county that required us to send out notification to all of the lot owners in Seclusion Dunes and Deer Lake Dunes, and this was at least a couple of years ago, I would say, that those notifications went out, and as part of that process, I spoke to many people, well, in Deer Lake Dunes, anyway, at least three lot owners called my office, the person in my name had the notification, and I made them aware at that time of not only the, the lawsuit that the notice was required for, but also the quiet title action. So they had the opportunity to intervene if they wanted to.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, my name is Lisa Minshew, and I do represent Dr. DeFranches. I am not here to testify, I didn't sign up, this is an application by the county, but having heard Ms. Oxon's repeated misrepresentations, I just really couldn't stand to not say something. Ms. Oxon tried unsuccessfully to intervene herself into the lawsuit, and the judge rejected her. She tried, but he said, no.
Ma'am? Ma'am?
As the county attorneys told you, through the county, they tried to include her and all the other owners in Seclusion Dunes and your, and the judge's...
And I'm sorry, I, so, Miss, we did not file a motion to dismiss at Ms. Oxon's request, but that was an attempt by the county to get all of the lot owners involved in the litigation.
Right, and the judge said that those parties did not need to be in the suit. And I also wanted to clarify that we did reach out to the owners of Deer Lake Dunes, and even though it wasn't required legally, we did notice them, and nobody responded. They didn't want to be involved. They have a private drive, they didn't care about this turnaround. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that, as far as I'm aware, no one has ever submitted an offer to Dr. DeFranches to sell the lot. He doesn't want to sell the lot, he wants to build his home, and that's why the application's been submitted, you've seen it, it's complete. As far as we know, there's nothing that this application violates. It meets every aspect of the code. I think there's one thing about a cover on the walkway between two parts of it, which the architect's dealing with. But as far as setbacks, square footage, all of that, we're good. So I, I, like I said, we are not here asking for the abandonment, but we're not objecting to it. So we're just making sure that the statements by Ms. Oxon are clarified, because Dr. DeFranches has done nothing but tried to comply with every aspect of the code. This property is one thousand percent surrounded by private property. So how are you going to get the public to it? Thank you.
Thank you. So you, so I understand, you said that the county tried to include both seclusion...
So we filed a motion to dismiss for failure to join indispensable parties in the quiet title action, and we made the argument that all of the lot owners in Seclusion Dunes and all of the lot owners in Deer Lake Dunes should be involved in the litigation, so their interests, you know, so they would have an opportunity to explain what their interest was in the property, if any, and have a say. Unfortunately, the court, you know, didn't rule in our favor and didn't include those parties, but we, we tried to make them a part of this litigation.
You said you did notice the Deer Lake Dunes?
As part of another lawsuit that Dr. DeFranches filed, I was required to send out notification to all, I wasn't required to send it out to every lot owner in Seclusion Dunes and Deer Lake Dunes, but I did send it to every lot owner in Seclusion Dunes and Deer Lake Dunes. They were aware of that litigation, and whenever individuals contacted my office, and I know I spoke to at least three lot owners in Deer Lake Dunes, I informed them of the quiet title action, which had also been filed. Yes. Lot one, two.
Is a party, and that owner, before they sold to these people, already signed a stipulated judgment saying that Lot One is making no claim to this property being an easement.
For Lot One, you can see, that's not the Oxons, though. That's another apartment of Mr. Rosenheim's.
Right, the Forsters.
What's their name?
Forsters, yeah.
The ones next door to it, didn't?
They were a party, and they stipulated, and it's already been entered as a judgment.
But the judge ruled that they had to remove the turnaround in there. What was the reason behind that, because at that time, was there still a county easement in there?
Well, the reason the judge ruled that they have to remove the turnaround is because they didn't, they never responded to the lawsuit, so the judge entered a default against them.
So everybody in Deer Lake Dunes, nobody responded to that?
No, sir. Well, now, so Deer Lake Dunes Homeowners Association was a, a names defendant in the quiet title action, and Ms. Minshew attempted to serve the Deer Lake Dunes Homeowners Association, which was dissolved several years ago.
Individual owner, or not?
Right, the homeowners association.
Are you, are you saying that title to the drive, not the rest of the property, but to the drive, is still Deer Lake Beach Drive, or Deer Lake Dunes?
Are you talking about the turnaround or the drive?
Drive.
The drive is the Deer Lake Dunes Homeowners Association.
Doesn't exist.
No, it's been administratively dissolved several years ago.
Well, when you notice them, you'd use the address, wouldn't you? So somebody's getting the information on the tax rolls. Okay.
An individual owner that were noticed by the county?
Well, they got, they got the information, what I'm trying to get at is, they, somebody got the information.
That's my understanding.
Any questions, comments, concerns, thoughts?
I, just to confirm, county has no reason, no benefit to the county?
And, and I, I know why you guys are grappling with this, because this is very unusual, and we see a lot of abandonments come through where people are asking us to abandon accesses to the beach, or pieces of property that could be used for improvements, and, you know, it's hard to wrap our minds around why, you know, this may or may not be a good idea. And frankly, I'm not the decision maker. You guys are the decision makers, and the county commissioners are the ultimate decision makers, but I can tell you that the Public Works Department has looked at this, and given the unique circumstances, they can't figure out a way that they could use the property currently.
It's their liability to the county because they do still own easement to it.
So I'm not going to get too much into the litigation that we have pending with Dr. DeFranches, but I mean, obviously, that's part of the reason why we're going through this process, that we would have if we continue to sort hurt an interest.
Sounds like some county's best interest is not being involved. Make a recommendation, make a motion that we abandon the property.
Is that the second? Tom's second. I, I don't disagree, I just, I don't like abandoning easement. That's difficult to do, but at the same time, if the county says they have no public interest in it, I don't know that we have a choice.
Ability for them to, like you said.
I understand. I just don't like abandoning easements. It's bad for the rest of the state.
I mean, there's no way it could be used for parking for this...
So the problem is that all around it is, is platted private property, have a way to get...
Even that road coming in is private, isn't it? So you've got a private access road coming in.
Ah, yeah, right, right, right. Even those roads here are private, yeah. Cut it.
Okay. Any other comments? No, ma'am, public comments closed. Anybody else? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I believe that's our last item. We stand adjourned.
If I have it, still.